Eric of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, at this time, we will have a moment of silence, please. All right. Up first on our agenda is the agenda approval. And I believe this time, we have a motion to amend the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I need to add personnel to the last section of my portion.
Chairman Winkle, I move that we add that 6E. Got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hensley. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. Our agenda stands approved. Next item this evening is our consent agenda, which includes tax refunds and releases, Kanye tax foreclosure update for the commissioners, property revalue update that's included in your packet, and the minutes previously provided and supplied by Madam Clerk Mandy Bradley. So, any discuss, well, hearing, at this time, let's see, I'll entertain a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I like to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, is there any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you, everybody. Up next is our public comment portion of the meeting, and Mandy handed me a list, I said, find what I did with it. Let's see, our public comment portion this evening, we only have one individual sign up, that individual is Brian Bramlett.
You got it.
Come on up, Brian, right here to the podium, please. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
I got it dialed in on the laptop.
All right, brother. Appreciate it very much.
For sure.
She'll start the clock when you start.
Oh, goodness, okay, we got this. All right, hello, everyone. My name is Brian Bramlett, I'm the director of a nonprofit called Healing Ecosystems, and I'm a Mars Hill resident. We are currently spearheading an initiative to get dangerous herbicides banned in Madison County, and we are calling for an ordinance to be considered by this council on that matter. This is to protect the health of our community and children. As you probably are aware, French Broad Electric Company and the Department of Transportation spray hundreds of pounds of herbicides on the land this time of year to keep power lines and roads clear vegetation, which is a noble cause. But we have learned in the past several years that herbicides, specifically glyphosate, not only kill plants, but also harm our streams, fish, animals, and humans. Glyphosate is linked with many kinds of cancer, autoimmune diseases, and multiple other health issues. It affects the size and reproductive activity of fish and other animals. Here's some nerd stuff. It was originally thought to only affect a specific enzymatic pathway in plants, which animals do not have. However, it is known that our gut bacteria possesses pathway. Gut bacteria outnumber our human cells ten to one and play a critical role in our health. Because of this, glyphosate is extremely toxic to us and our kids, et cetera. The way it is applied in public spaces is highly irresponsible, often being sprayed near or into waterways where it affects aquatic life and food crops and gets widely distributed. Through the product, though the product labels claim it is safe, peer-reviewed research shows that it is not. Dozens of counties in the U.S. and over twenty countries have banned these chemicals. We could be a big influence here in Madison County by being one of the first counties in our area to take a stand against herbicides. French Broad Electric Company has only been using them since 2011. They could return to manual clearing and employ local people to do this work. Convenience and saving money are not worth sacrificing the health of our community and ecology. I personally love to forage fish and hunt here, and I want to be able to do that safely and pass that on to people and pass a legacy of that on. So, my nonprofit currently has a petition with over three hundred signatures to get French Broad Electric Company to stop spraying herbicides, and we plan to start another petition to ban herbicides in this county if this board needs evidence that the community is concerned about this issue, which it definitely is. If you would like to read studies about the dangers of herbicides, I have several on my website, it's healingecosystems.com. We all live here, and herbicides affect all of us and will affect generations to come, whether you choose to believe in them or not. So I would like to propose that we choose a healthy future for our children, for the ecology, and for our community, and honor the pristine soil, air, and amazing mountains that we live in. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it very much.
Yep. It's my first time doing this, so I don't know what the follow-up is, but...
So, we'll give you a little background. So, this is, public comment is exactly that, it's public comment, there's no direct interaction back and forth at this time. I would suggest that if you have any information that you would like for us to review that you forwarded to our board clerk, Mandy Bradley, and she'll disperse it out to us, and then at that point, we can discuss it as a board, decide what to do.
I'll do that.
All right. Thank you all so much. Appreciate you coming.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. All right, that was the only person we had signed up for public comment this evening, so we'll move on with our agenda. And up next is Matthew Wilson. He is our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Finance intern, and he's going to be presenting on Public Broadband Access Grant Agreement. And Matthew, the floor is yours, good to see you.
Yes, sir, good to see you too. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. In your packets, you should have found a proposed agreement between the Madison County Government and the Land of Sky Council of Governments, which would provide funding in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for what we're calling a broadband opportunity grant. This grant aims to improve digital accessibility and literacy for folks and young children here in Madison County. This money originated from Dogwood Health Trust and the Land of Sky Cog, serving as a pass-through for this money, asked that Madison County help direct and prioritize spending for this money, for these funds. Otherwise, this money would have just gone into a device refurbishment program. After consulting with department heads and management, we collectively identified three potential uses of these funds. Number one, the establishment of a public Wi-Fi system in downtown Marshall. Number two, expanding the hotspot lending program that is currently at the library system, primarily through data coverage, covering the cost of data coverage that they would need for those hotspots, as well as providing digital literacy devices for the school system through interactive smart boards, similar to what we have here right before you. Also, in your packet, you should find a spreadsheet outlining the potential funding streams for these three identified priorities. I would just note that these are rough cost estimates, and for the public Wi-Fi project in particular, we would need to carry out an RFP process in order to identify an ideal ISP provider to partner with. Within that spreadsheet, you will also see the outline of funds from what was a separate fifty thousand dollar agreement, grant opportunity, that originated between Madison County and the state of North Carolina's hometown Strong Program. This money, that money, that separate pot of money was originally intended for the downtown Wi-Fi project in Marshall, but it was not completed. To this day, thirty-four thousand dollars of that original sum of money for the hometown Strong Program has remained in the general fund. As I have outlined in your spreadsheet, we can use sixteen thousand dollars from what I'm gonna call this new pot of money to supplement the thirty-four thousand dollars from the old pot of money and complete the downtown Marshall Wi-Fi project with the remaining funds being used to help provide data coverage to the hotspots at the library system and the interactive smart boards with the school system. So it is my request that you vote on this agreement, authorize the county manager to sign on behalf of the county, and, which would allow us to receive the fifty thousand dollars for these identified programs, but before then, I'm happy to accept or take any questions I can help answer.
Anybody have any questions for Matthew?
Good presentation, Matthew.
Oh, thank you.
No, I'm sorry.
Just one point of clarity, and I know we've talked about this in leadership meetings, once the expenditure of these funds, it would be up to either the town of Marshall or the downtown business association, someone to take on the long-term sustainability?
That is correct, sir. Under North Carolina statute, of course, county governments are not authorized to maintain public Wi-Fi systems, so this would be something, the public Wi-Fi project would be something that would need to be turned over to the town of Marshall, or perhaps the downtown business association, but that's, that's a conversation for them.
So that conversation hasn't happened yet?
They, they are aware of this, this funding being available, and as I understand, they are on board with the project moving forward, but as, as who is, as to who is going to maintain the system long-term, I'm not sure a decision has been made on that point.
That was gonna, that leads into my question, which was, in the past, the reason that the thirty-four thousand dollars was left over was because the town of Marshall decided that they didn't want to be the ones to have to maintain that system.
Right.
So the money ended up just sitting there because the town of Marshall didn't want to deal with it. So, my, my only concern is, is whether that mindset has changed at all or, or not, so...
Yeah, yes, sir. In my, in my discussions with the town of Marshall, I believe that town leadership is on board with maintaining the system if no other partner within downtown Marshall would be willing to step forward to help maintain the system.
And for the record, I believe in Mars Hill and in Hot Springs, the downtown business associations maintain those after the money ran out, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, and I will also, I will also mention that there is an additional likely twenty-five thousand dollars that will be coming our way through this grant opportunity, so if there are other funding priorities that we may identify at a future date, we can work with the Land of Sky Cog, and they'd be happy to have a conversation with us on the eligibility of those projects.
Yeah.
Chairman Winkle, based on the presentation and agreements just before, is a move that we authorize county manager to do into the agreement with Land of Sky?
So we have a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is, that we accept, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion at this time? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. All right. Thank you, Matthew.
All right, thank you much.
All right, up next on the agenda is Finance Officer Kerry Ledford. Hey, Kerry.
Good evening, gentlemen. So, before you, your first is, for your approval is Item A, which is the first of two budget amendments this evening, and this first budget amendment, number thirteen, records additional revenue brought in by the sheriff's office for housing of juveniles. You will find the recording of donations made to the animal shelter, as well as to DSS for the Veterans Service Office. This amendment records additional revenue for the solid waste department and moving it for the expense for the future of the closing costs. Also, there are adjustments to the fire and vehicle funds to account for additional revenue and expenses for the month of June, as well as the TDA and the occupancy tax funds. Here too is the recording of additional revenue generated by the quarter-sent sales tax in the amount of fifty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
So with this budget amendment, does that completely close out our last fiscal year now?
Hopefully that will make it as tidy as possible, yes.
As tidy as possible, all right. All right, everybody, you've heard Madam Finance Officer's presentation there on budget amendment thirteen. This time, I'll entertain a motion, we accept budget amendment thirteen.
I'll move it to a second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. Budget amendment thirteen passes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next is Item B, which is budget amendment number one of the new FY24. This amendment essentially is correcting some carryover grant amounts that changed since the creation of the budget. We've spent money in those grants, and now we are taking that money away from this year's budget. These are grants that had expenditures in the last couple of weeks, and these lines need to be decreased to reflect those expenses. Also, additional salary for the developmental services department for the certifications.
You guys have the information before you at this time? You've had the opportunity to review it as it was in your packet, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that we approve budget amendment number one.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Wyatt, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. Budget amendment number one passes.
Thank you. Now for Item C is the June's financial reports. We have finished FY23 at a hundred percent. On the second page, you'll see that for our general fund, we've received ninety-two point ninety-five percent of our revenue, and our expenses are at eighty-two point twenty-three percent. We expect revenue to increase as the sales tax money come in, as well as Land of Sky and some DSS funding that comes in as the months proceed. Also, will be posted back to FY23. Also, we expect some expenses just to increase slightly as some invoices are still coming in from this past year.
Well, I'll say, Kerry, I appreciate your diligence, you're almost excited when you say it, but it's good. The questions I have in, which are routine, you're great about having the knowledge to answer them, I appreciate that, and making sure that our finances are budgeted and, and balanced the way they should be, so it's a lot off of us as commissioners and all county managers. Thank you, and your staff.
Thank you.
One more completed budget, closer to retirement, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Kerry.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for comments for Kerry, guys? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next is County Manager Rod Honeycutt.
You have 6A in your book, you'll have a petition abandoned in the road also in front of your desk tonight, there was two handouts, one was the updated two, that request, and another is a document from Van Winkle Law Firm. General base of business is a request of banning six one miles of road along Upper Thomas Branch, that is portions of a larger tract than the pilot, they own on both sides of the road, it has been petition to the state, and the state will not act upon it until the county commission makes a recommendation. I have reviewed the documents and find that the petition is accurate, and will forward based off your recommendation to confirm or deny petition. It has no bearing on anyone other than the owner of the property, except for your question.
So this is essentially the tail end of the road?
Yes, sir.
They own both sides of the road, and they own everything that the road leads to?
Yes, sir. No way they still see it? Egress or ingress, that will follow anybody.
Does anyone else have a right-of-way through there to access other properties?
What are they gonna do with it? Put a gate on it, shut it down?
Private property.
Once they own it, they do anything they want to do with it.
Are they gonna have any state right on their property?
No, sir.
So they're gonna cut it off of the property line?
Guess it starts very far.
I'll ask Donnie to help me out, and also, we have an attorney to represent the client through that also.
My understanding is that the entire roadway is one point four eight miles long. US Highway twenty-five. And, and I believe, and, and we can ask the petitioner's attorney to correct it if I'm wrong, I think part of the Upper Thomas Branch, as it crosses the petitioner's property, will remain a public roadway, but only the, the tail end portion of it, the last point six one inches of a mile, hundreds of a mile, will be abandoned. Yes, there's a, there's a mouth of it that is attached to your petition in your material.
Do we have anyone from DOT or from Marlberry that would like to speak to, to any of this?
Please come to the podium, if you would. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Larry McDevitt, I'm an attorney from Asheville with Van Winkle Law Firm, and we represent the petitioners in this matter. I didn't come prepared to offer a presentation, but just to try to address questions or any concerns that you might have. Your Attorney, County Attorney Donnie Laws, was correct about the full length of Upper Thomas Branch Road, and it will come into our property, and the state will continue to maintain point eight seven five miles that comes within our property, and we're, we're asking it to end, we're gonna build a turnaround at our expense, and Commissioner Wyatt's familiar with this project because he was on the planning board when we came through it. We plan to have a gate there, at least that's, I think is the plan. The engineer, Marvin Mercer, is here as also to help address questions, but we will, they'll abandon it, we'll take over the maintenance of it, the state won't have to, and there, as far as I know, no objections to it. It certainly will facilitate the development of the conference center, which is gonna be a, a, a good thing for the county, a good addition, and we hope that I can, we can address any questions you've got, and that you'd be willing to approve it.
So there will be a turnaround, anybody that goes up to the dead end portion of the road, there will be?
There will be.
School buses or?
There will.
So currently, Upper Thomas Branch comes off twenty-five, you have twenty-five, comes all the way down to Orion Reach, where you turn to the right, that's where the turn, if you're familiar with it, Orion Reach is a private road that turns off to the right. That's actually where the school bus turns around now, and, and other vehicles. The road continues on into the subject property, and so, yes, the DOT right-of-way will end at, you know, within that property, but that'll be where Orion Reach is. We've designed that turnaround, we'll be paving that, as, as Mr. McDevitt said, at the client's expense. We have submitted that driveway permit for that turnaround, but obviously, they can't approve that until we know what the abandonment's gonna be. If the abandonment's not gonna happen, then the turnaround will have to change a little bit, and if abandonment is gonna happen, then the turnaround will be as we've designed it. But there will be public access at that point, and then a full turnaround and back out.
Sounds good. And turnaround and be able to accommodate school buses, so they won't have to turn around into Orion Reach anymore.
So we, we use NCD, we had to use NCDOT standards, so it'll, it'll, it'll turn, well, it's, okay, the turnaround is still at Orion Reach, it's still in that same area where they turn around now, but it's actually gonna be upgraded to a full, you know, ninety-foot, you know, a T, a T turnaround, so like, well, like a typical subdivision would have in, in modern, you know.
Modern, that doesn't affect anybody else's property, right?
No, they purchased, they purchased all the property in that area, so the entire turnaround is actually, so in addition, so, so the right-of-way for, for Upper Thomas Branch is not deeded right-of-way, for, not, not entire length, it is up at the very beginning of twenty-five, but down here, it's prescribed right-of-way, it's just maintenance, okay? They're actually gonna deed that turnaround to, that area, to just that end, that's on their property to, to that. So that way, if the DOT ever does come through and pick up from their back to, all the way back to twenty-five, they'll, and get all of it deeded, they can do that. But currently, it'll just, they'll be deeding that, and that's one of the reasons we had to make it to their standards. DOT initially said, don't pave it, client came back and said, are you sure? And they said, well, we'd have to maintain it, but if you'll pave it to our standards, we haven't paved it, so they're gonna pave it as well, just the turnaround. Yeah.
Gotcha. Good. Thank you, man.
Any other questions?
Anybody have any additional questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Marvin, good seeing you.
Thank you for having me.
All right, man.
Good to see you again. I just wanna say, it's been a pleasure to work with Mandy Bradley and Donnie Laws, two of the nicest people I've ever had to work with, and it's, I just wanted to mention that to you.
Appreciate hearing that, thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. All right, gentlemen, you've had the opportunity to ask questions about the, the proposal. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the abandonment of the road, of this section of the road.
Per the resolution that we've been presented with, Chairman Winkle, I still move for secondary rule fourteen oh five, for that portion of being point one six tenths per mile.
Got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, is there any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. Any opposed? Or one?
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
General, we'll transition to tab six B, surplus property, two surplus properties appear consideration tonight, bid one.
Actually, property leases is B, right? On my agenda. Do I have a, do I have an outdated copy? Property leases, six B. Sorry.
So six B is property leases. The goal of six B is to streamline all the leases throughout the county where we lease property to an agency, an individual, or a community, so they are done annually, right now, they're done in various amounts of time, from one to ten years. I'm asking to have that put on a one-year lease agreement to provide the county the opportunity to better manage it with justice necessary for multi-use purposes of these properties should it come to phase. It optimizes them all in the same cycle, and makes it easier for the county manager and administration to manage those leases, except for your questions.
Just two concerns. One is, I definitely like to get on schedule. Two is the, a point of clarity, you're saying all leases, so the Veterans Park lease, the, the lease for the fairgrounds?
Fairgrounds, yes, Veterans Park, no.
I'm gonna say that we authorize this scheduled calendar, just, but not to obligate us to say that they're all gonna be one year. So I think we're gonna entertain some discussion about some being longer than one year, not necessarily community centers, but there again, the Veterans Park's another example, that's ten-year lease, so...
Yeah, my personal thoughts is, with the community centers, I think one-year lease probably can be appropriate. I've got a concern, and not only with the, with the, the Veterans Park, but with the fairgrounds committee, with the fairgrounds in particular, but also, have we identified everywhere else, we, we have other, we have other leases out there too, that, for example, the, the retail leases that are at the, at the shopping plaza there, with, at the admin offices, the structure, the, the building up here on Print Pack, I forget the name of the building, I apologize, I mean, there's other, there's a, there's a whole host of other opportunities here where leases are gonna come into play. So are those all one-year leases already, Donnie? Those other, the, the retail leases and the factory up here, I don't, I don't recall them that being the case?
They're all, I mean, we've got some one-year, we've got some three-year, we've got some that have expired and turned into a year-to-year, we've got some ten-year leases. I know the county manager wants to sort of get them on some kind of regular schedule so that we can try to set them up where they will maybe become due close to the same time so that we can deal with them all at once, but we, we got a resolution...
we, we got a resolution that was approved sometime back that actually authorizes the county manager to enter into leases that are up to one year, one year. So those are easy to handle because you do not have to give the thirty-day notice and all of the legal process if it's one year or less. So, so maybe the thing to do would be to let your county manager go through and make you a spreadsheet of every lease you've got. Let you look at where it is on the terms, and then you can look at those and hopefully a lot of them, let him handle administratively, but the ones that you see that, that you may wanna go through the legal process to pull those off and sort of segregate those in a different way. I think it's just about what he really wants to is get a handle on.
Sure, and, and we would like for that to happen too, quite frankly.
Consolidate as much as possible under his authority to that position. The handle's definitely good, but yeah, I've heard Attorney Laws brings back a list, let's put as much as we can in there, but just know that there'll be something that won't be.
We'll put that on August's agenda before we can have a dashboard.
Work session.
Yeah, that, that may be a good work session on where we can really go in and have some in-depth conversations and maybe even appropriate. Just, I'm just floating this out there is, for food for thought, to have some of the people who head up those organizations that are involved in leasing these properties to, to get a little input. Um, my concern, I've got with, is with fairgrounds is, you know, they've got a couple of different projects that they're already working on. And I think if you give them a one-year lease, that undermines their ability to pursue some of those projects. And that would be, that would be my concern, and that's the first one that comes to mind for me. And it may be, that may be a situation with some of the community centers too. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I think it's something that, that requires some additional thought, discussion before we, before we just instantly throw a, a one-year blanket on everybody. What's that?
Because it's easy.
Yeah, just, yeah, I, I mean, I, I wanna simplify things as much as possible, but, but I don't wanna cut off our nose despite our face and.
I think those are good points because depending on the lease, some of those leases are told, are very dependent upon the organization seeking funding through October and the branch programs. Then there's quite a few of them to where we control everything, you know, we, but they just pay us rent.
Right.
And maybe on those, it would be more prudent to give us a whole lot more leeway and not tie up their property longer than a year 'cause those folks are just, all they're doing is paying us rent, and we're taking care of everything else. So when we get that list, we can go down those and sort of try to divide up which are which.
My other thought is, does this affect youth league as well? Would that affect the youth league usage of the ball fields and that sort of thing?
No, it would not. We, they're, they're, we allow them to use that, not, they, they do not lease that.
It's not a formal lease. Gotcha. Any other thoughts, guys?
Table this one for more work.
It was just set up for a discussion tonight anyway, wasn't it?
Um, yes, sir, for information.
Yeah, let's table it for a little more work, maybe take it up. So I think because of the way the logistics fell this month, we don't actually have a work session scheduled for July, do we?
Sure, Thursday morning. Yes, sir. No, sir, I'm talking about leadership.
You're talking about leadership roundtable?
No, no work session. The next one is the regular scheduled meeting on the eighth.
Of August.
Sure.
Do we wanna try and have it back for a discussion at a regular meeting in August, or do we wanna, do we wanna take this up in a work session?
I can get the list together between now and the eighth. I'll be presenting it to you then. Information again, and you can take it with you, and we'll do the work session later for the meet part of it.
That'll give us opportunity to have some time to, to look at everything and review it more thoroughly.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Now is six, I just wanna recognize real quick though, I'm sorry, not to hijack your portion, but we had, uh, uh, let's see, I believe it was the Devil's Fork metric, is that correct? So the, the, the hot dog at one hundred was this past weekend, and Donny Laws, our county attorney, was actually the winner of the Devil's Fork metric of the, of the race. And so, I'd like to congratulate Donny for that accomplishment. I think Donny said it was sixty-eight miles, is that right? Is that what you said? Sixty-six miles. So that's, um, and that's a, that, that, that matrix, that the, the, the course that they do for that is a difficult drive in a car. I can imagine what it's like on a bicycle. And I'm only gonna have to imagine it because my, it would be too much internet fodder if I got my big butt on a bicycle and tried to do that, so.
Well, if I could give a plug to the, to the roadway club in Madison County. I've done bike races and rides all over eastern United States since the mid nineteen eighties. And I don't know how long you've had this one, probably close to twenty years.
This was the seventeenth.
But it is bike racers who, who like to, instead of going to ride race. This is one that we always come back to. I mean, it's fifteen minutes from our house. I mean, you, you can't beat it to get up and drive fifteen minutes to ride some of the most beautiful roads. And the folks that, that run that, I know all of the faces. They're very welcoming, they're friendly, they range from, you know, ten years old to eighty-some. Your sheriff's department was out in full at certain intersections. They were there at the beginning. Police departments, the college, it is one of the, the best-run rides that, that I've ever been part of, and they open up the, the college to, it was camping, dorm rooms that are open. The after-ride meal is fantastic.
Oh, good.
So, you know, and I don't know, you had a good turnout this year.
Best ever. Best ever in terms of dollars raised, twenty-five thousand and next.
Nice. Very good. Well, congratulations.
They didn't give me a head start, but see, that's what I gotta put up with.
Did you get a trophy or anything?
No.
No trophy, just bragging rights, huh? All right.
Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Donny, and thank you to Rotary and everybody participating. I know FFA helped. I know there's a bunch of organizations in the county that helped, and we're grateful for that, and Rod, I apologize for hijacking your segment. I'm sorry. I didn't know Donny was gonna give a dissertation. My apology. I should've known better, but I.
And now we'll transition to six C, which is surplus property. Two properties for your consideration tonight. First is bid one, and that's the final upset bid, amount of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar for the Island Gym. There were seven bids in total of that point six-three of an acre. And as you're aware, all of the proceeds minus the advertising fee in this will go to Town of Marshall. So it's up to your questions.
Correct. So the net proceeds of this would go, net proceeds, key on that, is net proceeds goes to Town of Marshall in order to, for the Town of Marshall to construct a park for the use and enjoyment of the youth of Madison County within the Marshall town limits, and at this time.
Does it actually go to them, or do we set it aside?
We set it aside for their use, I believe, is what we decided on. Was that not correct, Carrie?
We actually have a contract that I think, I think both of you all were part of that, that you negotiated with the Town of Marshall. And I think it is to be set aside appropriation for the Town of Marshall to be used only for that park.
That's the way I remember it, and if I dug through my trusty folder here, I probably still have a copy of that agreement somewhere. Dig it out here later this evening if necessary. And this, so this time, I'm gonna make a motion. We accept this bid and move on with.
Second.
So a motion by me, second by Vice Chairman Garrison. Is there any discussion?
Are they a time limit on when Marshall's got to spend it or anything like that, or?
Though, there's no time limit. We're gonna, we'll encourage them to, to, I don't believe, I don't recall a time limit being instituted. But in the meantime, I would assume that we'll be able to draw interest on that money, correct? So if the Town of Marshall, if the Town of Marshall delays, it's only gonna be to our benefit, but I, I don't, I, I would rather see it get to the, to use for the kids, all kidding aside, and that was the intent. The discussions and agreement we had with them was, was for them, you know, to take action, but we didn't put a timetable on, or a time limitation on, so. I'm not sure we can, can we, Donny?
I don't, I think you can just agree to fund it. I, I think they had some issues. They were trying to apply for some grants and they may be wanting to use this money as seed money for grants that they might be able to get, so. This would certainly help them in that process to know that that money is available.
And there wasn't, there, we did the vast majority of this all in-house, a lot of work by, I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna leave somebody out. I know Mandy worked hard on it. I think Brad did as well, maybe even Ross. Matthew maybe too, I'm not sure. I don't know. No, Matthew says no. So, but I, I, I do know that this was all done in-house to try to minimize any expenses and Carrie, I think, had a, had a big role in that as well, and we appreciate everybody. I know I'm gonna forget somebody. If I forgot you, it wasn't on purpose. I apologize right now, but for everyone that had a role in it, we appreciate it. And let's see, was there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we need to move to a vote then. All in favor? All right, Town of Marshall, get busy.
I've done one bid too, the amount of ten thousand dollars for point five-six, Phil Call, this is in reference to helping print flag, print packs in their parking area.
Just to back up on that, I guess, the minute that property sold, we can cancel the insurance and the maintenance, the maintenance agreement and stuff on.
I would assume we probably need to get the deed signed over before we cancel the insurance and, and any of that stuff.
There's also maintenance. Is there a maintenance agreement for, along?
I guess it's a long work. We'll make sure that we, we put a diligence and hand it over correctly.
I think we had negotiated with the town to do the mowing, didn't we?
Mowing? No, sir. We picked it up.
Really?
So the contractor added it onto the courthouse at no charge.
Okay.
So it was reduced.
All right. Thank you. So yeah, so yeah, we'll, we'll need to make sure all that's squared away. Let's see, so up, up next, getting back to the property there, Print Pack Link.
Yes, sir. Ten thousand dollars for point five-six is to help create additional parking with only one bid for that property.
And I don't recognize that signature. I'm assuming that's representative of Print Pack's signature. Is that what that is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, so this is going to the, oh, I do see now where it says name Print Pack. I got you.
Chairman, I'll make a move to accept that bid.
Motion by Commissioner Hensley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor. All right, it is done. Uh, let's see, up next is consideration of proposed amendment to the noise ordinance.
So I'm gonna ask that Brad join us at the podium, and we can see that John Doerr make it on, we have John Doerr. General, at tab D, this is the adjustment to the current land correction, Martha County noise ordinance. We presented this at the working session and wanna do a follow-up tonight for your consideration. Brad, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Sure. This amendment is basically to allow agriculture, agritourism uses to be used under the noise ordinance, or, excuse me, party.
Subjected to the noise.
Subjected to the noise ordinance, yes. Right now, we have the, the ordinance set up so that bona fide farms and are exempt, and agritourism is part of bona fide farms, and this is essentially taking bona fide farms and splitting that up so that the agritourism uses would be subject to the noise ordinance.
So the only thing not subject to the noise ordinance regarding bona, bona fide farms operations would actually be legitimate and full farming operations, is that correct?
Yes.
We're asking you, John.
We're looking at you, John.
Sorry, I want to turn to you here or Brad. Yeah, the intent here and purpose is that this would exempt agricultural uses as are, as is defined under the agricultural statute in North Carolina, but would not include the agritourism activities which can be included within the definition, but are expressly excluded here, and, and examples of, of that can be special event facilities. And also, the amendment specifically states that special event facility would be subject to the noise.
All right. Just a few questions I have. One is, I, I lay me a concern, question the same as Commissioner Wyatt has laid with Bill. Response. Is, are, any of our other boards, have they been involved in this process as far as planning board, board adjustments, board adjustments?
This was just the work group that you participated on and I participated on and the staff participated on. We did have an invitation to planning board members, but they weren't able to participate.
I'm sorry, on the revisions.
No, this has been staff-driven.
Second thing is, if, if it's a bona fide farm operation, but they do have a special event facility there, and they're deemed as a bona fide farm operation, they no longer fall under the requirements or the ordinance for a special event facility, is that correct?
So if I heard the question correctly, what you're saying is that if something like a facility falls under the definition of an exemption for bona fide farm, they are no longer regulated under the, so the answer is yes. If you fall by a bona fide farm exemption under state law, you are not subject to zoning regulation for a special event facility, however, you are still subject to the noise ordinance, because your noise ordinance is not passed under your zoning powers. It's under your police powers, general administrative powers by the county.
So why are we calling them a special event facility if in fact they are no longer a special event facility?
So the way we would read this ordinance is, so this definition in this amendment defines special events facility to make it synonymous. It's the same definition that's in your zoning ordinance. So, but you don't, I, I, let me back up. You have a zoning ordinance that regulates special events facilities. You have a noise ordinance that regulates, that regulates your noise. So if something is exempt under your zoning ordinance for a special event facility that doesn't exempt from the noise and you specifically, I, I see Chairman Wyatt, he is, he was that.
No, I'm trying, go, keep going, John. I'm trying to get Jamie to turn the volume up on you a little bit.
So this would subject special events facilities as defined under the noise. If you look on page, I think it's two of, or three of the proposed amendment in the noise. So it defines special event facility. That is the same definition used in your zoning ordinance. So what this does, this ensures complete overlap, meaning if someone was to be exempt from your zoning ordinance and be in a special events facility, they would be expressly covered by your noise ordinance. Make sure that there is no gap in regulation.
The only problem I see is in the coverage, they're covered under the classification as residential, which is fifty-five decimal and fifty at nine.
Well, I, I think it would be arguable whether they are covered by the residential or the commercial depending on the use. There is an argument to say that a special events facility is more consistent with a commercial use than it would be a residential use, so that would really come down to the specifics of the particular use on a particular property.
Can we add that as one of the categories? You have residential, business, commercial, and special event?
You could, and, and that's entirely within your prerogative. The way your noise ordinance is currently written, though, you sort of need two. The way your noise ordinance is currently written, though, you sort of, you sort of have those three categories with the broad decimal limits. Um, and as far as I can tell from the ordinance, there is no, no particular use that is otherwise called out in the noise ordinance. So, if you did do that, what I would suggest would be essentially tracking a paragraph four, right before section seven, that specifically dealt with special event facilities.
And then we could go back...
I would not encourage you to do that wordsmithing during tonight's meeting. Um, I, I sort of gave you two alternatives. You can, uh, sort of table this to your next meeting and direct us to include that language with whatever decimal limit you want for special event facilities, or you could adopt things as proposed tonight and direct staff to bring back another subsequent amendment to your noise ordinance that would specifically address special event facilities and the decimals.
Which is better? Or is there a time crunch on getting the wording in?
I, I, I tend to prefer since you're taking a comprehensive approach to revisiting this and, and your amendments in light of, uh, you know, things that have come out of, doing it all together. But I, it's sort of six or one half dozen. I would say it's better to do it comprehensively, but I don't see the significant problem. You wouldn't give these parties...
I'm glad to see we put it in here. I think it just, it's another point of clarity so that people that have bona fide farms and special event venues understand, so that also those that are responding to and enforcing it, everybody's on the same sheet of music as far as it goes. I, I, I am also concerned that, that it, in, at the same time, it tosses all these folks that have special event facilities to have them labeled as bona fide farm, which is not that difficult to do. And then they would be exempt from the special event, uh, decimal level of forty-five. So, I would ask that we go back and revisit whatever process would be necessary to maintain that under the noise ordinance.
So, to contextually, I don't know that Brad mentioned this. One of the main reasons this got brought back to you is that a number of folks who are operating special event facilities started applying or trying to apply for bona fide farm exemptions, and they're making the argument that, well, we're now not subject to zoning, and we're not gonna follow the noise ordinance. So, this is not hypothetical. This is in direct response to some folks who are trying to get out from having to meet either standard. Um, and I think all we need to know is if, if the commission's in agreement, uh, for drafting a paragraph that deals with special event facilities specifically in a lower decimal unit, we can bring that back to you at the next meeting, or, uh, yeah, however you prefer.
I'd prefer to address it all at one time as you, as well, like, the comprehensive approach. And plus, we can have, you know, whatever discussion needs to be had if there are any other areas of concern or loopholes or vagueness that needs to be addressed. And I apologize for missing that meeting. Uh, we would be having a discussion, and I've been here, so I apologize.
So, this time, are, is, are you making a motion, we table the discussion to give staff the time to remedy those concerns?
Yeah, and I, I, I am making that motion, and I'd also request that we, um, once again, try to solicit input from the boards that are directly related to this, whether it be the board of justice or the planning board.
I would just remind the questioners that because this is your noise ordinance, this is not a zoning regulation. I wouldn't want anyone to be confused about that. Obviously, this can be taken to any board you would like for feedback, but this would not, because it's a police power administrative type regulation, it would typically go to either of those boards.
That's a good point.
Yep, fair point. So, do you want to measure motion now?
No, I'm just gonna leave the same. Anybody that's relevant should be soliciting for input. I'm assuming the names of the boards, so if they're relevant, they should be solicited for input. Input, if they're not relevant, then don't.
Mandy, you need clarification on his motion? Would you restate your motion, Mr. Vice Chair?
I'm, I move that we send this back for further consideration of, um, soliciting input for any necessary boards or individuals, and that we address the issue of special event venues having a category and a decimal level being set for them that's in accordance with the special event ordinance. And then bring the whole thing back to package.
Just for clarity, for staff purposes, uh, is the forty-five decimal unit sort of the starting point? You would like us to use from that to that, or...
That's what's in the special, that's what's in the special event venue, so it would seem logical that they would mirror each other.
They gain a whole lot of decibels if they get to, uh, consider themselves commercial.
And just to reiterate, and I had a conversation with Chairman Whitman, I don't care how much noise they make. They can make all the noise they want on their property, just gotta keep it there.
So, we have a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison. Mandy, are you clear on his motion at this point? Thank you. Um, so, we've got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right, passes unanimously. John, I apologize for interrupting you. I was trying to get the volume turned up because we've got a real bad rain shower going over us, and, uh, the roof of this building was making it real hard to hear you, so I apologize for interrupting you. Yeah, yeah, we did. Thank you very much.
I was wondering how long you were gonna talk while he was waving.
All right.
Good night.
Thank you, John. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you, Brad.
Sir.
Thanks, Brad.
All right. Time will transition to the emergency portion of the agenda, and that's six E, the personnel. So, any questions? The first hiring action, the hiring of a nine-one-one telecommunicator, Mr. Wallen. Uh, Mr. Wallen qualifies for this job, had salaries he posted there on the job announcement. So, any questions?
I also move, got a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, any discussion? Hearing...
Yes, my clerk. Um, candidate's name is Katrina Wallen.
And the position is for nine-one-one telecommunicator, Katrina Wallen. Uh, we got a motion by, uh, Vice Chairman Garrison, second by Commissioner Hensley, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay.
Tim, the second job offer is for a position offered for a grant coordinator, Miss Anna Sheldon.
Chairman Whitman, I move that we hire Sheldon for the grant coordinator position.
All right, we got a motion by Vice, by Vice Chairman Garrison, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor?
Tim, the third action is to transfer, uh, Mr. Matt Ketchel from finance technician to deputy finance director.
Mr. Chairman, I like that name.
Motion by, uh, Commissioner Hensley?
Second.
There's a second, second by Commissioner Wyatt, any discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor? All right.
Tim, the last personnel action is to adjust the salary for employees who have chief certificates in their line of work, specifically, uh, Danny Allen and Parker Gordon. Uh, these gentlemen have received a number of certificates, and I need to adjust the budget in their salaries based on the certificate achieved. So, any questions?
So, uh, well, for, um, positions that involve various certifications, uh, is what, uh, we are starting with the trades, and this is our first step in, in doing that, correct?
Well, Mr. Danny has achieved seven certificates, and Gordon Parker has achieved three. Uh, and their salaries will be commensurate with the certificate they have achieved.
I just have a point of clarity, um, Colonel. Are we, are we voting on particular people and certain cases? Are we voting for this department, uh, to be budgeted for these cer, for certifications?
So, tonight in the budget amendment, uh, we adopted the finance portion to support this. Uh, so, this is just for the personnel, uh, in their salary adjustments.
In this specific department?
In this specific...
Okay, have we approved the implementation of certification program for building...
No, sir, we have not. This is, uh, first in a precursor to that.
Should we do that before we allocate the funds for it?
I think we would need to wait a little.
Should we do both?
You can certainly do that, if you're ready.
That's, we're implementing a, a process here for, um, pay grade increases based on certification, so it would seem logical that we would, we would move to and approve that, that process, and then that we would, uh, then apply that to these individuals.
I think the, the question...
When one leaves, somebody comes along.
I, I think the point is, though, that we are, the first step in the process is to apply it to this department only. This procedure is not...
But we're not applying...
We, we are going, we, we are going to consider, uh, each department on its individual merits, and the certifications on their individual merits.
My concern is, is we're making a motion based off two people when there's other people in that department that are currently acquiring certifications.
Subjected to, correct.
That we would make, implement the program first. And then, Madam Finance Director, would you like to chime in on this?
Probably be better so people can hear you.
I hope I have it with me. I think the amount that was, um, proposed to you within the budget amendment accounted not just for the seven that Mr. Allen has and the two, three that Mr. Parker has, but the potential for each, um, inspector to get two a year. So, there'll be, there's enough money in that budget amendment that presented for, uh, Mr. Guth as well as the other gentleman in that department also.
Meadows.
Yes. So, that amount was within the budget amendment to begin this whole department, to have this year starting out that that department could achieve those certificates.
This would call the county manager right now, if I have the authority to increase the pay of the employees out of the board's consideration, so we're making a change to the HR policy. With the adoption of HR policy, you put in that procedure, uh, to allow that upon achieving a certificate. Right now, county manager's office, is that by bringing for the board to vote?
Well, there again, should, uh, that's just, that's, we're voting on a financial issue here, not on, on process. It would seem we'd do them both.
We could do both.
Don, you certainly can do both. You can implement a policy in building inspection, that's the appropriate department. That would say you, uh, upon employees gaining additional certifications, that they will receive a pay increase in X amount.
Really?
And, and if you vote on that, that is going to automatically include...
The other employee's name...
The second motion. So, if you vote on that, that's all you need to vote on, because that will take care of everything.
That's, this has been a stickler historically. There's been a lot of, uh, question about, did we do it? Didn't we do it? Did they do it ten years ago? Did they do it five years ago? I just wanna nip that. So, my motion is that we implement a program for, um, certification, uh, compensation in the amount of one thousand forty dollars per certification per employee for the, uh, Development Services Department regarding billing inspection code enforcement. I'll say that.
And we'll, and we'll allow the county manager to increase the pay working together with the finance officer without that having to come back to the board.
Yep. Very good point.
All right, so we have a motion by Vice Chairman Garrison, second by Commissioner Hensley. Is there any discussion at this time?
I, I think it's critical that, that, that little tag on the ends there, otherwise every time I'm making certification behind me, I have this discussion.
Correct.
Right now, it's for economic development only.
No, building inspection department only.
Building inspection department only, until we bring the entire spending back.
Yeah, now, I, I specifically said for code enforcement and inspection certifications only. You can get all kinds of certifications.
Well, and, and I'm gonna, in discussion, I'm gonna offer up, and we're now in the formal discussion phase. I'm going to offer up that we clarify and say that the certifications have to be specific to their employment. They can't just go get random certifications in order to get a pay grade. It needs to be pertinent to their employment with the county.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing there will, so, the HR directors are gonna coordinate and present to the Colonel with all those different... I mean, we've got them here, so I'm... Is that Brad?
And, and Commissioner Briggs brings up a good point as well. Do you care to stay? You want me to restate it? Commissioner Briggs just said that, um, uh, if they lose the certification, then they, the pay decreases immediately upon the loss of said certification. So, this isn't just a one-way street. If they don't keep their certifications up, then their pay gets adjusted down as those certifications drop off. Right, everybody good? Everybody on the same page? All right, any additional discussions?
Well, over to you.
Any additional discussion at this time? Hearing none, move to a vote, all in favor?
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Colonel.
Like, Jim, acknowledge your two tasks.
Thanks, Sue.
Two items to table back, now, it's coming back to me on the eighth, bringing those changes. So, any questions? That's all I've got for that.
So, that, uh, that will wrap up our agenda for the evening. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Briggs, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hensley, all in favor? Folks, you're welcome to try and wait the rain out a little.